Counsel to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. We have this evening, counsel, a proclamation. I just wanted to, the recipient of the proclamation is not here, so I just wanted to recognize and have you have this information in front of you. I do know the proclamation, I'll be giving that on Thursday evening at the La Duke Mansion. And if the recipient would come, then we'll read it. If not, that's what's happening and then you're fully informed what that proclamation's all about. Okay? Approval of the minutes, counsel. We have the regular city council meeting minutes and workshop of October 15, 2018. Any additions or corrections, Councilmember Brockes? They'll stand corrected. I don't need a motion there, but I appreciate your interjection of that motion. If there's no objection, what you're telling me, there's no objection, they stand approved. Counsel items to be considered. Counsel, is there any additional counsel items to be considered? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Foltz?
May I put number 10, because I'm going to be calling this administration?
Okay. We'll put 10 and put that under number three, under administration. Is that a motion then, with the exception of 10, to adopt? Okay. The councilmember Foltz makes a motion to adopt the consent agenda with number 10 being pulled. Second by councilmember Vaughn. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to community development, authorized signature for the Hastings Economic Development Administration Management Practices. John, we're very glad to have you at the meeting. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. What we have before you today are three items, actually two for your action, related to some of the activities of HEDRA, the Hastings Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority. When we established HEDRA in 2009, we established a few rules of operation, including bylaws, administration management practices, then financial subsidy criteria. And since it's been some time since we established HEDRA, we thought it would be best to review these and to look at potential changes to them. So, we as staff, the community development staff, financial staff, as well as our financial advisors reviewed these to determine whether there were any legal changes or if there were any procedural changes that should be made. And so, we did that, reviewed those with HEDRA at their last meeting in October, and we have before you the changes tonight. So, I'll review a couple of some of the major changes that we are looking at. Under our HEDRA bylaws, we're officially changing our meeting time back to 6:00 PM. We did that officially at the last meeting, but just as a good practice that we will be meeting at 6:00. Probably the item that we spent the most time on was, we changed the majority voting record that we would require to take certain actions on items. And for issuance of business subsidies, issuance of forgiveness of any loans exceeding $20,000, authorization to sell real property, execute contracts of more than $20,000, or establish a TIF district. We put a requirement in there that a majority of all members, that means four of seven HEDRA members, must be vote affirmative to have these actions take place. Under the existing bylaws that we had, it was simply a majority of those present. We thought that for items that were of major consequence, that it would be incumbent on us to have a majority of all sitting members, or all members of HEDRA, voting for that. And so, we did make that change. Under the administrative and management practices, we do have a report requirement in there that I don't think we've really abided by, which is an annual report to the county, or to the city council, excuse me, on changes on the enabling resolutions, and we have not done that. So, what we've done is we'll put that in that we would do that when necessary. So, we certainly want to keep the council apprised of anything that HEDRA would be doing. And we have our annual report and other reporting activities that we have throughout the year. Some other technical changes on some designations and staff changes on there. And then, I included within your packet as well, that something that does not necessarily need council action, but more is an informational purpose, and that's our financial assistance and business subsidy criteria. In order for HEDRA, or the city, to take place in any business subsidies, which is essentially value of $150,000 or more, there are certain things that need to be in place. We need to adopt certain business subsidy criteria that will establish when and if we were to give a business subsidy. And so, we did update a few portions of that language and made some changes, some legal changes reflecting new laws within that. So, what I have before you tonight are those three things, the administrative and management practices, and the HEDRA bylaws that we're asking for your action for tonight, as well as the informational item on the financial assistance and business subsidy criteria. And I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, John, for that presentation, counsel. This issue is now before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Signed by councilmember Leifeld. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the update in regards to the Rotary Pavilion Programming Recap. Paige, we're very glad to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mary Hex, and councilmembers. I have a short presentation, just an overview of our programming at Levy Park this year. Beautiful.
We're getting a new system installed this month, so by the time we get to December, you'll be seeing a new system in here. We're looking forward to it. Paige?
All right. Well, I'm looking forward to giving you a little overview of our programming at Levy Park this season. This is our third season programming the Rotary Pavilion in Levy Park. We started at the beginning of June and just wrapped up the first of August of October. Quick few numbers, we scheduled 38 programs and events at the Rotary Pavilion. We saw over 3,900 attendees, and along with that, we scheduled rentals, and 27 days were booked at the Rotary Pavilion this summer. And with those rentals, the majority were gatherings, so like celebrations, birthday parties, reunions. And then, we also had a handful of special events that took place, as well as Rivertown Days that's held annually, and this year at Levy Park, and our Rivertown Live Concert held by the Rotary Club, and then a few weddings here this summer. So, for our 38 scheduled programs and events, we had 24 free programs and events, and we had 14 fee-based programs. And those fee-based are individuals benefiting from a certain service such as fitness or So, our programming at Levy Park consists of a little bit of city funds, as well as sponsorships. So, we built a few relationships with some local organizations and businesses to help us fund some of those programs. So, for example, we have Speed Manufacturing, who helps sponsor our performances in the park, and then we have Ardent Mills, who helps sponsor our movies in the park, and we have Power Within Chiropractic, who helps sponsor our storytime in the park, as well as Dakota Electric Association, who helps sponsor Rotary Pavilion programs in general. So, we want to continue to build those relationships and continue sponsorships to help pay for some of those programs and services offered to our residents and visitors of Hastings. A few highlights from 2018. We continued with our summer kickoff event at Levy Park, which is an open house style event for the community and visitors of Hastings. So, there was music, and Minnesota Zoo Mobile was there, along with some kids' activities, programs, bounce houses, face painting, photo booth, a lot of fun things for families and individuals to come out to. Our party in the park, which is a celebration of National Parks and Rec Month, which is every year in July. So, we held that as well, open house style event. And our Make Music Day, which was our celebration on June 21st, which happens every year around the world, and actually over 800 cities and 120 countries participate in this event, and we are excited to continue to offer this in Hastings. This year was at five different parks, and over 700 people, 720 people attended this year. It was from 7:00 AM to 9:30 PM. So, it was a fun day. Our storytime in the park, this year, we've, we offered daytime as in last past years, as well as evening storytimes. We saw over 100 during our daytime, and about 10 to 30 during our evening storytimes. For our performances in the park, we had a really good turnout with Classical Actors Ensemble, as well as our Children's Castle Theater. Movies in the park, we added two additional movies this summer, as well as music in the park, which are always a favorite and come through on our survey as a favorite as well. Along with my job, I work closely with Lee, our communications coordinator, and we develop outreach materials to reach our community and visitors of Hastings. So, we try to work on multiple different platforms and avenues to communicate with our community here in Hastings. So, for this year, Lee provided me with some data on our Facebook outreach, as well as Instagram, and all of our increases on interactions, as well as, as well as developing a consistent and cohesive marketing, so for our events. And we feel this is important, because it just continues to create awareness around Hastings for our residents, as well as visitors who come to Hastings. So, you can see an example here is the new cohesive and more consistent outreach on our social media platforms that we have. Our survey was this October. We had 64 responses, and we promoted on our website, our social media pages, and then our local media partners. With those responses, we had 67% attended one of four events, and the others were additional. Along with our Rotary Pavilion programming, we had an outreach to primarily Facebook was how people heard about the event, or our Rivertown Newsletter, which is what we put out in spring, summer, and fall. With most common, as I mentioned before, movies and music is really common, as well as family-friendly events is what people like to see more of for 2019. Our average age range, most popular age was 40 to 49, and the residence was Hastings. So, for our programming at Levy Park, it takes all of our sponsors and our partners and participates to make it possible. And with those sponsorships, we want to continue to grow those and work with partners here locally, as well as in the metro area, to make programs and events happen for our residents and visitors of Hastings. And I want to thank council for your continued support of our Rotary Pavilion programs at Levy Park, and I look forward to planning for 2019.
Thank you, Paige, for that presentation. Counsel, is there any questions, questions or comments? Councilmember Leifeld?
Hey, Paige, thank you. Another great presentation. Question on the fees collected piece from last year to this year. Was that because it was quite a bit lower? Were you able to offer more free events this year? Or what would be the significant reason that we're seeing such a decrease? I love free events. Everyone loves free events. But I just noticed the number.
So, for our art in the park, we decreased the fee from $20 to $10 to just make it more accessible for families. We had quite a few comments of people have two to three kids, and then they're paying for themselves as well. It turns out to be more expensive than they were hoping for a fun event out in the park for that evening. So, we decreased that by 50%. And then, we also work with H-PAC to fund our art in the park programs. So, they paid for the instructor materials, and we programmed the art in the park.
I think it's important for people in the city who are listening to understand, these events down there aren't to make the city money. They're to get people involved and to build a sense of community. So, I think you're doing a wonderful job, and I just, I'm sad that it's winter and it has to stop. So, we'll see you there next spring.
Yes. Thank you.
There's skating going on down there in the skate rink. That sounds good. Okay. Is there any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Paige, do you have any kind of a long-term goal in terms of what you anticipate we could do for attendance? It looks like 3,900 is for 3,700 this year. Did it go down from last year?
Yep.
It went down from last year. So, what do you anticipate, or what are you trying to push for in terms of getting x number of people down there? What's your goal in terms of that?
So, I think not necessarily goal towards the amount of people, but just goal towards offering a variety of programs to our residents and visitors of Hastings. And that being that weather is favorable as well, since it's an outdoor space and there's not the indoor facility. We want to make sure that we are offering the programs when it's comfortable. So, if it rains and it's 30 mile an hour winds, like we had at a few events, we postpone and try to plan for the next event as well. So, we're working with, I'm working with our communications coordinator to increase that outreach there, whether events are postponed or canceled, and then finding new avenues and platforms to outreach to our community.
One more question. We're focusing on the community of Hastings and the immediate surrounding areas. Is there any thought or any goal to perhaps attract more people from out of town for events?
I think it's always a good, good idea to have goals in lots of different ways and options. So, I think that'd be a great goal to, to connect with and promote tourism here in Hastings, and possibly the Rotary Pavilion as a way and an avenue to do that.
I know the press seems to be very money oriented, like we have to pay for letters to the governor and so forth, and I, I know that even the St. Paul and Indianapolis paper, if there is a local event here in Hastings, other cities do the same thing. Sometimes you have to sort of grease the skids, pay something, get an ad, or something like that to get the press to, to say, hey, here's a day trip, you know, that you could take to Hastings and so forth. Are you running into any kind of a problem with anything like that at all?
So, for our local, local media partners here in Hastings, we have a pretty good relationship with HCTV, KDWA, and the Hastings Star Gazette. And so, we reach out to them prior to events and programs. We provide them with our schedule, and they're pretty good promoters and supporters of our event, whether it's online or in paper form. So, we try to continue that partnership, and we do not have any payments that we give them for articles that they post. They do it free of charge for us.
Yeah. I know the local radio station has been just wonderful with promoting, you know, what goes on in the city, and they deserve an awful lot of credit. KDWA, they go out, you know, basically in a regional circumference, which is just great. So, we get some good coverage and good information out through them. That is just wonderful. And then, I, just one last comment. The public should again be aware that these kinds of events, I don't think would be happening right now, were it not for the Rotary Club here in Hastings, which did a tremendous amount of effort in getting the pavilion put together as a community gathering point. It certainly is fulfilling the goal of the Rotary. And I truly want to thank them for the efforts that they put forth. I think they put in over $250,000 or-
$500,000.
$500,000. Here, I sound like a bureaucrat, but it is a lot of money. It is a lot of money, and a tremendous amount of effort, and we certainly do thank them. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Paige, you may be able to, I've always asked staff to think what's next, what are we missing down there? I think you should barely work with Chris and bring that forward, but the numbers of 3,700, 4,000, to me, like an athletic complex, when does it get beat up, wore out, start to after, we have to worry about replacing some of the infrastructure? I know like the bricks, and after a Rivertown Days, when there's a lot of people down there, that turf is pretty beat up. How often do we, are we thinking about taking breaks where we can add something, but then we got to back off a little bit on our programming? Is that discussed at us? Or, I guess more or less, is the place holding up? Or do we need to start allocating some funds to bring this place back, or change it to artificial turf in some areas?
Yeah. I definitely can't quite speak to that, but I have my experience being down there quite often, two to four days a week for four months out of the year. You do see a little wear and tear. But as for maintenance and upkeep, I definitely think our park supervisor would definitely be able to provide some and shed some light on the maintenance and upkeep of the Levy Park's grounds.
It's more just an observation, I think, that we should probably keep an eye on, how long can this, I use the La Duke as an example, it could probably only hold so much people without putting some money back into it. And when are we going to start to reinvest in down there? Is it a five-year, 10-year plan? I don't know that. So, it's more of an observation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Touch member Brockes?
Paige, I just have one question. As you were going through and putting together this, these numbers, did you have any thoughts about conclusions that you were making about what you might change next year, or what you might do differently that you'd be willing to share? Or are you still kind of going through that process?
Yeah. I think I go through that process all year long, especially actually the most, when programs are actually happening. I feel like the most valuable feedback that I get is usually in person at community events, or if I'm at another event throughout the year, they know that I'm at Levy Park, and they see me there. And so, getting that feedback from people on site and bringing that back and putting it in my notes for ongoing feedback that I have, I want to continue to do that and to make sure that we're providing opportunities for our residents that are wanted and needed, and we're filling gaps and areas that, that we may have, making that available to our residents here in Hastings. So, I think just always having an open communication with our residents and being available, just to talk with them informally at programs and events is really valuable. So, I want to continue to do that to fine-tune our programs and events at Levy Park, as well as all year round, for the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Paige, for this information. It's really valuable. And I had shared with you on the side a little bit, some feedback that I had received from the Downtown Business Association, a couple of their members. They're interested, you know, very interested in the success of the Pavilion Park down there, and I would just encourage you, and I'd be happy to help, you know, facilitate some of these conversations about how it is perhaps we could, you know, plan strategically with the downtown restaurants and such, because I know that they're looking at your calendar, and they're thinking about like, oh, okay, well, maybe this will be a big event, and so maybe I need to staff up for it. And so, I just think that there might be a little, some opportunities for synergy there, you know, if we could work with some of the downtown businesses, as well as, you know, promoting some of these events. I think it's really exciting. I noticed that two of the big events from the summer weren't on here, and so I feel like your numbers are underrepresented, you know, Rivertown Days isn't on here. I know that you didn't do the programming for that, or the big event that took place in, was it September? It was the Rotary did it with the United-
Hairball.
What was that? Yeah. The Hairball. That was amazing. What a huge turnout that was. And so, the facility is, you know, getting used, and it's really exciting. I had a heck of a good time down there for the Hairball concert. That was very nice. So, anyhow, wonderful job, and so let's keep in touch on this in the future. I'll be sure to share this with some of the downtown businesses, businesses as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Paige. I was able to make quite a few events down there this year, and especially the music concerts and Rivertown Days. It was a, I think what, you know, when we started this program, counsel, to create the Riverfront Renaissance, our goal was, is that Hastings is a Rivertown community. We were, you know, ever since 1857, when we were incorporated, we always looked to the river. Back then, it was a major commerce and highway to the city, and now we see it differently as a beautiful ecological reason, as a recreational reason, and economic with the barges. So, I think that, you know, once again, this process, the Renaissance, Riverfront Renaissance project, has made Hastings, again, rediscover the river, appreciate that we are a river city, a rivertown, and I'm quite proud of it. Before we did this project, I remember going to other, like down to Winona, and Red Wing, and other communities in Wisconsin, and in Minnesota, and in Illinois, where they all had infrastructure along the river, and they all used it. And we come here, and we had a bike trail, and that was nice, but that was the only thing that was down there. So, to see what we've done in the last several years, I think it's a real credit to this council and to the citizens of Hastings in supporting it, and I think you're seeing it being expressed every, every summer and every day, actually. I don't, I see people down there in the winter skating, right? So, it's a great thing to see. And thank you, Paige, for all your efforts to take on the programming of it. That's no easy task, and appreciate your efforts.
Yes. And thank you for your continued support, and I'm excited for 2019 programming at Levy Park.
Can't wait to go. Thank you. Okay, counsel, next we have the residential solid waste contract. Melanie?
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. You are asked tonight to accept the recommendation of the Utilities Committee toward the exclusive residential solid waste collection and recycling contract. And we are asking, or the committee's asking, that that be awarded to Tennis Sanitation for the term of January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2021. Earlier this year, the Utilities Committee, which is chaired by councilmember Balsanik and councilmembers Brockes and Lund, met and helped staff divide the parameters of the contract, and they really wanted to be certain that we continued all the existing provisions of our current contract. But then, they were also interested in seeing if providers would be able to bid on some additional provisions, including a second fall cleanup day, some options to offer organics, and then finally, the ability to provide some more coordinated commercial collection pricing. Those are all optional pieces of the proposal. So, we received three proposals earlier this year. The Utilities Committee asked staff to conduct the interviews, and we did that. And then, we met with the Utilities Committee a couple weeks ago, and we had recommended, based on the totality of all of the information, that Tennis Sanitation be awarded the contract. It was financial, it was logistical, it was just their whole package. We also discussed the optional items that were proposed by each of the proposals, and Tennis was the only one to offer an organics proposal. And what they're, what we will be going forward with is a one-year pilot program. It'll be for city facilities to collect organics within our sites, and then we will visit with Tennis after that one year and determine what are those next steps. We also will be offering an additional fall cleanup day. I'm kind of terming it Cleanup Day Light, because it won't have the hazardous waste, it won't have the shredding, but it will have the major collection elements. And then, the, Tennis had asked the committee to consider whether there would be an interest in extending the term of the contract. And what the committee is, is interested in doing, or expressed an interest in doing is three-year contract for the initial contract, and our current contract allows for one three-year extension, for a maximum of six years with a current provider. The committee was open to offering up to two renewals. So, theoretically, the term could be for nine years with one hauler, but again, the city retains the ability to go out for RFP after any three-year term. So, we don't lose any control over that, but we do have the ability to extend it if we feel like it's a good partnership. I'd like to thank the Utilities Committee for their time. They spent a lot of time providing feedback to us and reviewing the proposals with us. And with that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't see the actual contract that we're being asked to adopt in our packet, and so I was wondering about some of the particulars that perhaps would be in the contract. Is it something that personally I have wondered about in the past, is the start time for pickup? Myself, my pickup is on Friday, and they usually come around 6:10 in the morning. And so, I was wondering what kind of stipulation is that are going to be within this contract then for earliest pickup time?
Within our current contracts, it is 6:30 AM to 6:30 PM, and that has not changed. If collection is being done prior to that, you just feel free to give me a call and I communicate that to Tennis, or call Tennis directly. They've been very responsive.
Okay. Terrific. And then, my second question was in regards to extra fees if the bins aren't fully closed. I had a constituent contact me once and say that they were charged an extra fee because their, you know, the bin wasn't completely closed, that it had been open. their, you know, the bin wasn't completely closed, that it had been open. And I had asked about that, and I was told that they weren't supposed to be charged for that. And so I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a, that there was, you know, stipulation in there for whether or not there's going to be an additional fee if, you know, the bins aren't completely closed, that residents are aware of that. Do you understand what I'm saying? I can't remember what it was, it was like an extra $10 or something like that if the bin was completely full. And so I just bring that up because I know a constituent brought it up, and I was a little surprised. So just to make sure that there are no surprises to our, you know, to our residents as they're getting their bills. It would be really nice to be able to see the contract, though. I'm not sure exactly what's all in the contract terms. I think that it's terrific having the options to do the additional renewals. Tennis has been a great partner in the past. And I know I myself, when we had a storm this last summer, they came and they took my extra tree branches and such, and I was really pleased that they actually came back a second time and picked it up. And so I think that they are providing a very good service. But it would be, it would be nice to be able to see exactly what is in, what is in the contract before it's completely signed.
Councilmember Balsanek?
Thank you, Your Honor. About a year ago, we did discuss this with Tennis about was there an extra charge if the bin was overflowing and the lid was not straight down? And we were told then that they did not do that. As long as the trash was in the receptacle, whether the lid was down or up, the fee was the same. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the extra $10 fee or anything. But, I mean, that has been their policy for the three years that they've been with us.
That's how I understand the policy. I think sometimes, you know, we don't know what to happen in that particular case. Sometimes, yeah, the lid was open and there was a bag laying next to the, next to the bin. Well, you know, now you're collecting an extra bag that might be laying next to the bin. So it's all subject to, it's all subject to subjection there, I guess.
Exactly, yep.
You are correct, councilmember.
I just wanted to, as chairman of the Utilities Committee, thank the city staff for doing such a great job of putting the contract together. And the public should know that the other two proposals that we got were way above what Tennis is charging with their new, with their new rates. And their new rates are marginally increased. So I'm very pleased with, you know, with what we, what the staff came up with to recommend to the committee. And I just want to say that 10 years on the council, I never got any compliments sent my way from constituents regarding former contract holders for trash reception. But when Tennis took over, I have continued to get very nice comments about what the company is doing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to point out that, you know, some cities choose to not commit to a specific hauler and allow multiple choices, and you can fend for yourself who you want to go with. And that, that has some appeal to some people. I used to live in Maple Grove, and when, when we, when we were there, every few weeks, somebody would be at our door, putting a flyer in our door, knocking on our door, talking to me about how much my garbage service was. And it was heavily price-driven, very pressure-oriented. And, and in the end, I'm not really sure if the shuffle was worth it. One thing I do know what happens in those situations is you have about 17 trucks driving by your house every, every, every garbage day, and they're skipping about half the block just to pick something up. So it's incredibly wasteful, it's loud, it's, I don't think you're going to get much of a better price break. What we get out of this is consistency, knowing that we have one, one source of compliments and one source for complaints, right? So we know that if things aren't going as well, a couple of things brought up, we know who to go to, and we can address that. And then part of the process is every three years, we can evaluate the quality of our agreement and our relationship, too. So I think this is set up, you know, in a way that's going to help the citizens of the town to have good, reliable, and affordable waste collection. Also, the, something that people probably don't realize because they're not, you know, waste experts, and, you know, this is something that, you know, you learn a bunch of things when you're on different committees. But this is, this isn't going just to the landfill, right? This is, this is processed and so forth. So there's, there's a, there's a benefit to that, that's, that's an extra, extra step and not as easy as just dumping it off at the fill. So that's, that's something to be aware of as far as what our collection is. And lastly, regarding the organics, it's, it's something that the committee felt was worth looking into as a, as something that's, I wouldn't say it's cutting edge per se, but it's, it's on the front edge of, of, you know, standardized collection. And we want to be mindful of that as we are looking at potentially a longer contract, you know, or extensions and so forth, that we understand what that looks like. The pilot is a great idea, you know, to kind of dip the toe in the water and work together to see if that is actually something that has some legs. But, you know, I think that's, that's why that's in there, too, council, is just to see what does this look like and how can, does this provide some benefit that we should explore further? So, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Balsanek?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I apologize for taking the microphone again, but a couple of things. Regarding the three-year contract with an option for another three years, maybe an option for three years after that, so it could be a total of nine. The committee did talk about what is cutting edge and what might the future of trash collection look like even three years down the line, six years down the line, certainly nine years down the line. There may be technology that becomes available that we don't want to be left out of. And so rather than tie ourselves up, you know, for a nine-year commitment, it was felt, let's do the three, we'll look and see what the industry is doing, and then, you know, take a look at it from there, and certainly again in six years after that. Another thing, I had a few people ask me, they wanted to know, you know, they were sort of comparing us to the problems that they're having in St. Paul. With St. Paul, the city of St. Paul going to a single carrier for residential. Well, the problem up there is that whether you have trash collected or not in St. Paul, you're being charged. There was an article in the paper just recently, a gentleman who cuts the lawn for a business next to his home in St. Paul, and for that, that business allows him to put his trash into their business trash receptacles. And so why should he have to pay the city of St. Paul to have his trash picked up when he has no trash, you know, there at his front doorstep? And what I pointed out here in Hastings is that you only pay if you have trash collection. If you don't have trash collection, if you're taking it somewhere else or, you know, to a business or whatever that you might have some arrangement with, there's no jeopardy on your part. So that is the difference between St. Paul and Hastings, that you're only paying for what you are, I shouldn't say getting, what you're giving up, I suppose, you know, putting it in reverse. Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, thank you, council, and I'm very pleased as to our garbage collection ordinance. I think it's a system that works fantastic. This used to be a very contentious issue in the city of Hastings. When I was elected on the city council in 1990, this was a huge, huge issue. And back then, the mayor appointed me on a special committee tasked with the two other council members, and we worked out the process we have today. And I think it's worked well, because in the old days, we just rolled over contracts without RFPs. And people were always suspicious of that, and they wanted to make sure they were getting the best price. So we changed it, because we didn't want to, we didn't, and many people in the community at that time were calling for multiple haulers. We said, no, the single hauler system works better for our neighborhoods, but we have to have a process in which we know that we're getting the best deal. And I think we've done that with the three-year contracts, roll over, and RFPs. And, and so I've been delighted to see how this has evolved through the years. It's worked. It's worked in the city of Hastings. And I want to compliment Tennis, because, I'll tell you what, when we first got this going, we had the Hauler Waste Management was our prior carrier, they did, they did a fine job. But I'll tell you what, when Tennis took over, which is not easy, council, I give you credit, we changed a carrier six years ago, and Tennis won the contract. That's why we have the RFP process. It worked superbly. And in the last six years, I can tell you, I only got one phone call about, about one issue with trash collection. I think I called Stacy and got handled that afternoon. Prior to that, there would be, you know, here and there, a phone call, but I'd probably get at least one a month, something like that. But in my six, in the six years that Tennis has had this contract, one call. And I think that really says a lot to their service here in the great city of Hastings. Another thing that we were able to do is work with the previous hauler and with Tennis, we've always been in Dakota County the leader, or one of the cutting-edge leaders in recycling. We're probably one of the first communities in Dakota County that had single-sort recycling, right? Just throw it in one big, big container. We're leading edge. I know I get a chance, I was in Arizona not too long ago, and it was also another state down in Illinois, and was talking to another mayor there, and they're still using the little box cart that we had 15, 20 years ago and put each things in a bag. I told them what we do here in Minnesota with our, with our hauler Tennis, they were amazed. And so no wonder we're one of those leaders in, our 23,000 population in Dakota County is one of the leaders in recycling in Dakota County. So I'm very proud of it, and I'm very proud of the efforts of Tennis and what they've done, been able to do in recycling, to expand what we can recycle. And so it's all been, it's all been, this is really a good program that's worked well in the city of Hastings. I'm quite proud of the council by seeing that vision and by our vendor who's been able to practice that vision. So, thank you very much. I just had one quick question. You know, I looked at the rates here on 2018, the marginal increase for 2019. This is for approval of a three-year contract. What was the outlier for the 20 and 21 years?
Your Honor, thank you. Your Honor and council, our ordinance actually says that they will be proposed each year. So, no, there's no change for that first year.
Okay, great. Now we have that clarification. Okay, councilmember Volt?
Thank you, Your Honor. When you go to vote, I'm going to need to abstain. I'm not knowing what's in the contract, I might have a conflict of interest due to my employer. I'm not sure if they're named in there or not as a potential place for the refuse to be recycled at, so.
Thank you for that declaration. You're recognized to be abstained.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Brock?
I don't want to spend too much more time, but could you just briefly explain the revenue sharing? Because I know we do the checks and we do the presentations with the Boy Scouts and different groups that come in here, and maybe this would be a good time to just let people know kind of how that works and that is part of our relationship with Tennis.
Thank you, councilmember. Actually, Stacy, could you speak to the program and how you guys calculate it? Because I know we meet with you every quarter, but you can probably speak more to how you do that calculation. Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting, Stacy. Glad to have you here. Thank you. So as far as the recycling container at Terry's Hardware, that is every quarter, as you know, a different organization. We do have a waiting list for that, so if there is anybody that is interested, please send in, we'll get you added to that list. And with that, it's $15 per ton that is collected guaranteed to the organization. Now, the revenue share is a little bit different. That's not to do with Terry's, but rather the recycling that's collected here within the city of Hastings. And then a portion of the revenue is shared with the city. Now, that changes depending on markets and there is, Melanie does have in the RFP the actual calculation and everything for that. It's a bit, you know, it's confusing, but it's definitely all laid out in the RFP, and I encourage you to look at that. And please let us know if you have any questions about that. Thank you, appreciate that.
The recycling market is very volatile. You know, paper is up one week, aluminum's up or down, you know, next week, you know, it's, it is pretty complex. And I try to meet that formula on an average monthly basis.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Appreciate that, thank you. My father-in-law always asked me, where's the money for recycling go in Hastings? So I know other people might be wondering the same thing, so thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
And the funding that we receive from there, we get, we put into our general fund. Okay. Is there any other comments? Councilmember Vaughn?
I was just going to, I still think councilmember Lund made the right point here. Tennis has done, and I've heard this, is the word quality, because their trucks are quality, the people that help us out there at the recycling, even pick up, it's quality. So I, I'm glad you guys have been awarded this, and with that, I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Thank you, councilmember. The motion's been moved, and the chair of the operations committee seconds that motion. That, now that motion is before the body, is there any further, any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have number 10 off the consent agenda, the City Hall Masonry Restoration, the change orders, one through seven. Councilmember Volt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I was looking for an update. Last we heard this, it was kind of an unusual occasion where our city administrator, she was unable just to make that meeting, and staff weren't able to answer questions in regards to funding, and there had been some additional pieces of work that could have been added. And it was, it depended upon whether or not there was enough contingency funds set aside for it. And one in particular was the cleaning of the masonry, the stonework around City Hall. And I was just wondering if that actually did get included within the base package or in addition to the base package when the contract was awarded or not? And maybe that's a question for John, but thanks.
Your Honor and council, yes, I was not at that last meeting when this contract was awarded, but yes, those provisions were included. We do have sufficient funding to cover those additional items that were awarded by the council. And in fact, we are getting a price for doing cleaning of the police station, because once you clean one building, then your neighbor starts to look a little grungy. So we're going to be looking to do that as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And councilmember, was that a motion to, to accept?
Yes, Your Honor, so moved to.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volt makes a motion to approve that item. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by councilmember Liefeld. That motion is before the body, is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay? Next, we have comments from the audience. Comments from the audience. Anyone here who would like to speak to the council? Any, anything on your mind? Tom, back there, anything on your mind?
I've got a lot of things.
Okay, all right. All right. Seeing none, council, announcements, there are announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Balsanek?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention, as everybody probably knows, I'm on the board of directors for the Dakota Communications Center, that's our 911 facility. And at our last board meeting, I was so tickled to hear that the DCC is moving forward with the use of drones in the near future to, you know, send out to follow suspects or perhaps go to the scene of an accident to evaluate, you know, send, send photos back or video back so that a city knows what type of equipment to send out, and so on and so on. And I had brought this up about a year and a half ago at a... And I had brought this up about a year and a half ago at a board meeting, and they said, you know, what do you think we should be doing? And I said, well, you know, drones. My grandson has a drone that can go out about a mile and a half and, you know, hover and see the deer and, you know, the antelope playing and all of those things. And I said, you know, wouldn't it be something if we, you know, if we got the 911 call, there's a fire, you send the drone out, the drone is looking to see if it's gone through the roof, if it's coming out the windows, whatever. And immediately then, for example, the fire department knows the skinny on the thing and what equipment they should send out, what emergency vehicles and so forth. In the long run, we think it can be a money saver. And as we can see, you know, watching the evening news or, you know, the social aspects of news, drones are becoming a real part of our lives, our daily lives. So I'm pleased to say that they're going to be doing that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for that announcement. Any other announcements, Counsel?
Okay, I have a few announcements. I don't know if anybody knows this or not, but tomorrow's Election Day. So I'm going to announce that tomorrow is Election Day, November 6th, and we have numerous folks here who will be on the ballot, and I wish all the candidates for all the different various offices that will be up tomorrow, good luck to everybody. And, and one who has been involved in many of those, myself, nothing like the day after the election. So you work hard, everyone worked hard up to get to this point, and thank you for your public service, to be engaged with the public. It says a lot about our process here in Hastings. And thank you, I want to thank everybody for, for taking on that public service task. It's a, it's a worthy, it's a worthy call. So tomorrow from 8:00 a.m. to, it should be 7:00 a.m., polls open at 7:00 a.m., they go until 8:00 p.m. So tomorrow, polls open, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. On Thursday, November 8th, Hedra had a meeting at 6:00, it has now been canceled, no Hedra meeting at 6:00 p.m. this Thursday. On Friday, November 9th, at 7:30, this Friday, councilmembers, we are, we become the canvassing board for our local election. So we must meet at 7:30 a.m. on Friday to canvass the results of the general election. So we'll see you all bright and early Friday morning at 7:30. On Monday, November 12th, is Veterans Day, and so city, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day this next Monday. We'll also be working with HCTV with upgrades. We've been working, Melanie, for this, for what, about a year now? Okay, it's finally going to happen. HCTV, we're going to be working on some upgrades here in this council chambers. We'll be installing some new technology. So city meetings will be relocated to different rooms in City Hall for the next few weeks. There is a possibility our next council meeting might be in the community room, depending on how the work is going here. But we're going to have new technology, larger TVs for the public to see the screens and better than what we saw back here. Paige, the next time you give a presentation, it'll be in HD. It'll be very nice. So, and it'll be an easier feed for people at home who are watching council meetings to be able to see it, too. So that's going to be, begin, and so counsel, be flexible. We may be meeting in different rooms for council meetings, city council meetings and/or committee of the councils be meeting. Councilmember Balsanik?
Do you have any more?
I have a lot more.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, all right. On Tuesday, November 13th, you looked a little disappointed when I told you that, huh? Okay. On Tuesday, December 13th, at 7:00 p.m., the Planning Commission will be meeting, and on that same day, at 7:00 p.m., the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting. On Monday, November 19th, the anniversary of the Gettysburg Address, at 6:00 p.m., the City Council will be meeting a workshop at the, talking about the Fire Relief Association to give people an idea of how that works. So that'd be Fire Relief Association 101, we'll call it, 6:00 p.m. on November 19th, and then at 7:00 p.m. will be our regular city council meeting. Tuesday, November 20th, at 7:00 p.m., the Heritage Preservation Commission will be meeting. And on Wednesday, November 21st, at 7:30 a.m., Operations Committee Chair Balsanik with councilmembers Leifelt and Lund will be meeting to discuss the preliminary plans for the 2019 neighborhood projects and proposed assessment rates. So that'll be on Wednesday, November 21st, at 7:30 in the morning. On Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, November 23rd, of course, that will be Thanksgiving holiday, and city offices will be closed. And we like to wish a very happy birthday to our Community Development Director, John Hinsman, whose birthday is tomorrow on Election Day. That must be quite something there, John.
It's all for me.
Yeah, it's all for you. You know, so, but happy birthday. Must be 28 right now, 28, 29th birthday, something like that? Yeah, yeah, maybe they're reversed, I don't know. Congratulations, appreciate it. Okay, Counsel, we have no business, oh, the deer slayer over there, congratulations, Councilmember, on getting your buck.
Yeah, I, folks, I just got back from deer camp.
I could tell by the, by your wear.
Yeah, I remember the, the white shirt and the tie, but I forgot the sports jacket, so I thought, this is actually a designer shirt here, so anyway. Monday, the 12th, a week from today, 8:30 in the morning, at Hastings High School, open to the public, is a veterans appreciation ceremony in honor, in honor of Veterans Day. This is something that the high school does every four years, and it is quite the occasion. Veterans are asked to sit down on the main floor, the entire school population will be there, and the public is invited to the presentation as well. The band, the choir, the orchestra will be performing, there will be a guest speaker from the military as the keynote address person. And it is truly a marvelous tribute to the veterans of our community. If you can at all make, I would, I would hopefully, hopefully you can.
Okay, thank you for that announcement. That's an important announcement.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.